Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 13th, 2011 meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will you call the roll, please?
Timothy Biggs.
Resident.
Dean Carr.
Here.
Jeff Vaughn.
Here.
Joshua Think. Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
Dale Patrick.
Here.
John Dunham. Deanna Vlade.
Here.
Thank you. For those of you in the audience, in case you missed it on your walk in, in the lobby, there are copies of the agenda as well as the cases that will be heard tonight. So if you'd like to grab those, follow along, please do so. We do have a new board member with us this evening, Board Member Vlade, welcome. Thanks for your service. Agenda item B is minutes. We do have some minutes for approval from our Thursday, September 8th meeting. Have all board members had a chance to review those minutes? If a board member could please make a positive motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Carrs, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Mr. Carrs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I noted on the minutes that the narrative of the presentation and comments were not in as part of the minutes, and that was a little different than what I've seen in the past. I'm looking specifically on page four of the minutes, and I believe also page six. It appeared that all the petitioners or public's testimony wasn't part of the minutes.
Right. And that is how the minutes have been shifting towards, and what the concept is, is that if someone wants to listen to all of the testimony, as opposed to a transcript in the minutes, they can go on the web and listen at the municipal meeting's website.
And since these are, and this is where maybe the attorney can help, but since these are part of the, you know, we could be going to court on something like this, is that always going to be an available part of the record?
Yes.
For people to listen to them?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other comment. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carrs. Any other discussion on the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Biggs, for the second. Any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Agenda item C, Special Orders of Business. Are there any disclosures by any board members this evening? Seeing none. Moving on, Agenda item D, the Consent Agenda. We do have three resolutions for approval. Resolution number 2011-020, resolution 2011-019, and resolution number 2011-014. Have all board members had a chance to review those resolutions for approval? Looking for a positive motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Thank you, Mr. Patrick, and Ms. Denny, thank you for the second. Would anybody like to pull any of those resolutions from the Consent Agenda? Okay? Any objection to approval of the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, Consent Agenda is approved. No appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on our regular agenda that takes us to Agenda item H, Public Hearings. Before we begin public hearings, I'd like to read the Order of Business. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance, case number, and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, board members and the applicant may then direct questions to staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, again not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, board members and staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each member of the public has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, the staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for later, excuse me, for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair will ask the board for a positive motion. Before we begin with our first public hearing, I need to state for the record that we do have a quorum tonight. A fully constituted board is nine members. We have seven members here this evening, and for a motion to pass, a minimum of five yea votes are required. With that, let's start with case number one. That's 2011-102. Is the petitioner Matanuska Electric Association, or are their representatives present? They've indicated, yes, they are in fact here. Thank you. Mr. Barrett, I believe this is your case. Please provide the sufficiency of notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-one public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We did not receive any responses. The property was posted with public hearing signs, and it was advertised on the municipal website.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Please proceed when you're ready.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a variance request to encroach the 25-foot-wide stream setback. The survey for the property is in the package on page three, but I hope I remembered to give everyone a full-size color copy.
Does everyone have a full-size color copy? Okay?
Thank you. Good. We'll go over that in a minute. There are some photographs on pages 10 through 17 that I'd like to walk the board through before we actually start, because I didn't label them. The aerial on page 10 is just an overhead shot of the property, the boundary, the lot lines. That large circular cleared area that you see on that picture is an air quality station, monitoring station that was required by DEC as part of this project. The photo on page 11 is just a slight blow-up of that picture, and the line is, the lines on that picture are the streams that are in question tonight. On page 12 is a backed-out picture of the streams. You can see the property and the streams where they enter the property and then flow off the property to the northeast. The photo on page 13 does not involve the stream. That's just to show you what the fence looks like and the extent of the clearing that will occur once the fence is fully installed. The photo on page 14 is a movable gate, and the reason this photo is in there is, if you look in the section that is missing right now between the two pilings, fence posts, that's the actual stream. The stream is classified as a stream under current code, although technically it is an exhaust water raceway, I guess we call it. This is where the water exited the old hydroelectric plant and left the property. The photo on page 15 is the same raceway in a different direction. Page 16 is just to give you an indication of the upslope conditions from the power plant property. Seventeen is the old hydroelectric plant and portions of the raceway, which you probably can't even see through the underbrush growing in the foreground. As I mentioned, this is a request for stream encroachments in various locations. There are a few areas where the fence will actually cross the stream, and there are areas where the fence runs parallel or almost parallel to the stream but is within the 25-foot setback. The total property size for this application is 70 acres, which is why the scale isn't too good on any of the drawings, but I believe the color diagram does show it in sufficient detail for the purposes of tonight's case. And there's going to be a safety fence on the perimeter of the property, and that same fence is what will cross the stream in a few areas. The property was recently purchased by MEA. It's got several zoning districts on it. Those are not really germane to the variance, because the stream setback carries its own section of the code around with it. The standards for stream protection and the prohibited items are on page five. And to the standards, number one, that there is something exceptional in terms of physical circumstances affecting the property that require this variance, that standard is substantially met. This is often a difficult standard to apply to fences, but because this is, in effect, an altered stream, or now, I guess we could honestly call it a man-made raceway, a water outfall for the hydroelectric plant, that in itself is a physical circumstance that the channel has been altered in decades past. And now that in order for the applicant to fence it for security, the raceway has to be crossed in at least two locations and possibly three. Furthermore, there is steep slope on the south side of the property, and runoff from that slope comes down onto MEA property, and that runoff is now handled by this old raceway from the hydro plant. So you'll see when we get back to the conditions that there is a condition regarding the raceway and that no alteration or re-channelization of it occur. Even though it's only marginal as a stream, it still serves an important function for drainage, so the water management folks would like to make certain it stays and maintains that function. And MEA is aware of that. That is why, in one of that photos where you see the missing section of fence, the movable fence, they'll be able to keep the stream, the raceway, clear and running as is necessary throughout the years. Standard number two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application would create an exceptional or undue hardship. There are areas where the stream is within the 25-foot setback but not crossing it that the fence probably could have its setback increased and maybe even be at the legal setback. But there are certain restrictions on the property. The applicant needs to keep trespassers as far away from the power plant as possible. The old abandoned buildings on site do have historical importance, and MEA is not allowed to fence the public out from them. So that alone requires them to cross the stream in two places near the old Reed substation. And since the primary purpose of the fence is to keep the public away from a new power generation plant, safety concerns become an undue hardship for the applicant. This is something he has to do. Standard three, that the hardship is not self-imposed. That standard is not substantially met. Yes, there are physical conditions affecting the property, but the need for the variances does result from the actions of the applicant. Some of this may have resulted in some miscommunication between the applicant and the department. The applicant came in to discuss this project before he began, and there are certain instances when the department can grant limited clearing in preparation for this kind of a case. However, the clearing and the installation of the fence did proceed to quite a degree, and the fence is shown as crossing the raceway, the stream, in a couple of areas. So we cannot say that standard three has been substantially met, as the applicant proceeded with the weather in mind. He needed to get the fence posts in before the ground froze. That's something he does at his own risk. Standard four, the variance does not adversely affect neighboring properties. That standard is substantially met. No structural separation violations. There's no traffic vision triangle, and the stream in this area has already been re-channelized and altered. Standard five, the standard is substantially met. This is a dimensional request to violate the 25-foot setback. Standard six, the variance does not adversely affect health, safety, and welfare, as in standard four, that is also substantially met. In fact, not having the fence would pose potential safety problems. And standard seven, that the variance granted is the minimum. That standard is substantially met. As previously mentioned, excuse me, as previously mentioned, there are some locations where it might be possible to have the fence at 25 feet from the stream, but it is important that the fence be located on the perimeter of the property and as far from the power station as possible. So we view these encroachments as the minimum variance. Standard three, however, is not substantially met, so the department cannot recommend for approval. Should the board find that the seven standards are met, there are two conditions on pages eight and nine. And regarding condition B, that no alteration of stream channels, raceways, et cetera, is permitted, and any ground disturbance resulting must be corrected. I would like to add that when we did a site visit, we did not see any evidence that alteration of the stream channels has occurred, even in the areas where the fence crosses it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do any board members have questions for staff? Mr. Carrs.
Yes, Mr. Barrett. I note on page 30 of the staff packet, there are comments from Building Safety regarding the fence configuration at the crossings. Were those comments considered when you wrote your recommendations of, if the board were to find that the all standards are met?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carrs, yes, sir, they were. The photographs and site visit had not been made at the time that Mr. Wild made his comments. So I re-walked, or I walked the photos and re-walked the application and the survey back to both Building Safety and Watershed Management to make sure they had a second look at it, and they're okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Biggs.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, you mentioned that MEA was prohibited from restricting access or fencing off the old power plant building. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How would the public access it? Is there a dedicated access across MEA's property to those buildings?
Mr. Chairman, not that I am aware of. There is other land available, but you would have to hike in. I'm going to leave that to Mr. Colette to respond, because the access road to the property is going to have a security gate to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett, I have a question. On page 26 of the staff packet, transportation planning provided a recommendation that staff consult with the native village of Akutna. How was that handled?
Mr. Chairman, in the regular manner with direct notice to them, and they did call yesterday asking for a copy of the packet, but there was no follow-up. I assume they're satisfied.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board members have questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would the petitioner please come forward? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Jesse, that's J-E-S-S-E, Colette, C-O-L-L-E-T-T-E, and I'm with Matanuska Electric. And give me one minute here.
Certainly.
I'll start with this one, I suppose. Can everybody see this?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Colette. You'll have 10 minutes for your presentation. We ask that you speak to the seven standards that Mr. Barrett walked us through.
Right. Okay. Well, I'll get started with this drawing then. I'm not sure I can do this and stand away from the microphone. I just want to have these in front of me so I remember what they are. I think, actually, that the only standard to send contention is number three, but I'll cover the others just to make sure that they're all addressed. Of course, the first standard is, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, or slope, or such physical circumstances are not applicable to other land of the same district. And basically, our response is that the MEA Akutna generating plant was situated on the subject property to avoid placement of structures near the intermittent water channels and wetlands on the eastern portion of the property. And if I might, I'll, actually, now that I look at it, I don't know if you can see it, but if you find your site plan in the drawings, you'll see that on the eastern side of the site plan, there is a wetland that intrudes onto the site, and I'll point it out. So I pointed out the wetland. Originally, our fence was going to cross that wetland, and in response to being told that that was something that we should try to avoid, we moved the fence westward, approximately 500 feet where it is now, on the eastern side of the property. I hope I'm not getting my directions mixed up. Let's see. So due to the equipment and the nature of the operations constructed on the property, power generation, high-voltage substation equipment, MEA believes that the fencing of the entire parcel best serves to protect the public. So we're hoping to go within, closer than 25 feet of an intermittent drainage channel. And in this case, although it's classified as a stream, I've never seen water in it. It's a man-made, more or less a drainage ditch to allow the water to flow out of the hydro power plant, which was decommissioned in 1949, I believe. Item two, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly employed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. The nature of the equipment, our response is, the nature of the equipment and operations conducted at the site is quite different and poses more danger to the public than other uses in the vicinity. For this reason, it is proposed that the variance be issued to allow the fencing to come within 25 feet, basically, of the drainage channel for public protection. The other uses in the area are a bottling plant, and I think there's a few mobile homes in the area. In this particular place, we're going to have a power generation station that will generate power at 13,800 volts, which is then stepped up to 115,000 volts for transmission around the Matanuska area. It is dangerous by its very nature. So the farther away we can keep the public and the animals, the better off everybody will be. Item three, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions under circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. MEA really has made all efforts to avoid placement of the facility adjacent to the wetlands and intermittent drainage channels. However, the proposed placement of the fence is believed to be the best, in the best interests of the public's safety. We really believe that placing the fence where it is is the best option to protect the general public and to protect this very valuable asset that unfortunately we find ourselves in need of right now. The power that Matanuska Electric purchases is currently generated by power plants that are near the end of their useful life, and we want to, plan to replace those at the end of 2014. We think this is the best place, in fact, it's the only place we're able to find to actually install the power plant. So we would argue that we would have to balance the variance against, or I should say, the denial of the variance if it comes out of that, against public safety. Item four, I'll stay close to the mic here. The variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of the adjacent property as permitted under this code. Our response is that the placement of the fence as proposed will not affect any of the intermittent flows or drainage of water in the channels, and will not adversely affect the adjacent property. In fact, again, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but I've never seen any water in this channel. From a geotechnical standpoint, I think the reason for that is that it's a very well-drained glacial type of a soil, glacial fill at the site. So when the water comes off the hill, it generally either just goes directly into the ground or evaporates. Again, no water in the channel. Item five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of this code and will not change the character of the zoning district in which the property is located and will not permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. Our response is, this variance is granted, if granted, I should say, will comply with the intent of the code, as it will help to separate the activities allowed under the zoning of the property, and it lists I-2-S-L, from that of the adjoining properties, and will serve to, again, to protect the public. We just want to make sure that the people, the public, stays out of the facility. It could be very dangerous. And I believe a fence around the facility is actually mandated by the Department of Homeland Security. Item six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage, and, and our explanation is, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the standards of air or water quality, noise levels, or visual impacts in the area. It will serve to facilitate safety and protect the public. The power plant will be designed to operate well within the 50 dB limit at the fence line. It'll be behind a tree buffer, so it can't be seen necessarily from the highway, and we're anticipating, if it is fenced in, that it will be a safe, quiet, and environmentally responsible facility. It's going to burn natural gas, and it's very, very efficient. Item seven, the variance, yeah, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. And our explanation is, a fence enclosing the parcel and the equipment and operations located on and conducted on the property is the minimum that should be implemented to separate those operations from the adjacent parcels and provide protection to the public. Nothing more needs to be said. The property will be fenced, and the switchyard, which actually contains the switching devices to go from 13.8, or, let's see, 13,800 volts up to 115,000 volts, will have its own separate fence within that fence, just to be doubly safe. But the purpose of the outer fence is just to keep people from wandering through the other areas of the plant that will also be hazardous, and possibly to keep the bears out. So I wanted to point out on the map over here, I believe you have this picture in your packet, we have pictures of the drainage channel as it comes out of the hydro plant, and it looks to be, I wasn't here, but it looks like it was dug out to allow the water to flow out and possibly just to infiltrate into the ground. The reason I say that is because where it exits the power plant ground, so to speak, in other words, where it crosses where our fence line would be, it's very shallow. It's, it looks like just a kind of a depression in the ground. So we, again, we don't anticipate any aquatic life, and we don't anticipate any impacts to the water flow at all. We think it's the responsible thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Colette. Do any board members have questions for the petitioner? Mr. Biggs.
Thank you. Mr. Colette, I, as I look at the map, which I think is a replica of what your board shows, I was wondering if you could walk over to the board and point to the locations on there where this fence will cross the creek?
Sure. Now, I wish I brought my highlighters, because it's, I can see that it's very hard for you to see this from there, but originally, the fence was going to be out here. We moved the fence to this line right here, and the drainage ditch, the creek, the stream, whatever you want to call it, is right here. So right at the intersection of the picture line, we're going to have the fence that actually cross, cross the stream. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can, unfortunately. Our audio system can't, so I don't know if you could...
I can't bring this with me. I know what I'll do. Oh, it is? Okay. I don't want to break anything. Okay. Here we go. All right. Okay. So if you look on the right side of your drawing, there's an orange, and unfortunately, it's kind of faint, I'm sure. I hope you don't have black and white drawings, but there's an orange line that goes just to the right of this hatched area near the top, the north side of the property. And it comes down and essentially goes all the way straight, would be south on your drawing, straight down. The actual tail race, or drainage ditch, or stream crosses to your, well, it would go from your left to your right. And again, these are pictures of it. I'm not sure if your drawing has the pictures, but it's dry. We'll cross it right here, and then the fence actually comes around and crosses what could be construed as a depression, low spot... be construed as a depression, low spot, tail race, whatever, as it goes back into the Reed Substation, right where my finger is right now. Can everybody see that? Stand out of the way. So this is the, what we're calling the tail race, right here.
So those are the two locations?
Yes, those are the two locations. On the other side of the, of the drawing, the fence comes out of the Reed Substation and proceeds approximately this way. We're not showing, I'm not showing a stream on that side. There may be a drainage there under extreme conditions, but we're staying at the base of the hillside and proceeding up north.
The drawing I have has a cross-hatched area about where you were pointing, labeled with a number one in the middle of it.
Right.
And just to the upper left-hand corner of that hatched area, it looks like another stream crossing there. That's, is that the one you were sure, not sure whether it's really a?
Yeah, I've never seen any water in that area.
And, to your knowledge, are there access rights across MEA's property to those old buildings?
There will be. In fact, we'll be required, we'll be required to allow people to pass through our gates and to those historic sites if they want to. That's part of the, part of the rezoning.
And then, I think this is my last one, but the, the map doesn't show exactly where the power plant is going on this tract one, is it? Can you tell us about that?
In fact, I have another drawing. Bear with me just a second. Can I pass this around? It's kind of small.
Unfortunately, we'd have to enter that into the record and hang on to it for 30 days.
You can keep it for 60, as far as I'm concerned.
90, and you've got a deal.
All right.
If you could please bring it to Jill here in the front, she'll sticker it and.
So it looks like the power plant takes about, I'm going to visually estimate about a fourth of the property as fenced.
Thank you, Mr. Colette.
Sure.
Ms. Williams, did you clear your question, or?
My question has been answered, thanks.
Sure. Ms. Colette, I do have a follow-up question to Mr. Vig's. The hatched area that was called out there, number one on the site plan, says area not to be disturbed. Can you briefly describe, is that a natural condition requiring that constraint, or what?
It's a natural, not natural, it's an archaeological site left over from the original inhabitants, natives, if you will. Apparently, they used to come and trade, trade there. Yeah.
Any other questions by, by the board? Okay. Mr. Barrett, you have questions for Mr. Colette?
Couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. The, the stream crossings that Mr. Colette pointed out towards the right side of the survey and immediately around the Reed Substation, the streams in those areas, although still, under current code, classified as streams, are the drainage ways, or femoral streams, or intermittent or seasonal streams, whatever you'd like to call them. And I mention that because Mr. Colette correctly raised the issue of the wetland over on the extreme right-hand side of the property. By setting back the fence from that wetland, not only did MEA avoid that wetland, but they avoided a true stream. So I think we can say that by moving the fence to the west, they have helped satisfy both conditions one and condition seven. There were other physical constraints to the property, and they have attempted to minimize the encroachment, which is standard, standard number seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Pending no further questions from the board, thank you, Mr. Colette. You do have about a minute and a half left, in case you want rebuttal after the public hearing, or public testimony, excuse me.
Well, the only thing I would say is, we hope you will concur with us that installation of the fence where we show it does protect the public safety and.
You'll have a chance for that rebuttal after.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public testimony, if there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on the case. With that said, is there anybody from the public who would like to testify about this case? All right, seeing no one, the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. Mr. Colette, if you do want to use your last minute, you're welcome to.
Again, I just ask for your concurrence, that this is the right alignment for the fence, the fence is in the interest of public safety, and we ask for your indulgence in the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colette. With that, Matt West with the board. Public hearing is closed for this case. Looking for a positive motion from a board member, please. Mr. Cars, thank you. Would you please state your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to case number 2011-102, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2145-210 stream protection setback. Do I need to read the entire citation?
No, so long as I concur with its.
As written, again, variance from AMC 2145-210 stream protection setback to allow fence adjacent to and to cross the stream approximately as shown on the attached survey, subject to conditions A and B on page nine of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Ms. Williams, did you second that motion?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Mr. Cars, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I intend to support this motion. I find that, I agree with staff's assessment on the findings. They've found that standards one, two, four, five, six, and seven are either, actually, I believe they're all substantially met. And I concur with their, their findings with respect to standards three, standard three, I actually feel that this standard has partially met the, and concur with the applicant's contention that this is, you know, a safer location than other alternatives. I also weigh the fact that per staff and the applicant's testimony, this is, the, it's a creek in classification, but perhaps not a creek or stream in functionality. It was a man-made drainage way, and now it's been classified as a stream. However, I do note that watershed management did not appear, even though they did map it, they did not have an objection to the granting of this variance. So I, I do feel that the standard is met, and for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I also intend to support the motion. I concur with staff on all of the findings, except for number three, that the standards are substantially met. And for three, I also agree with Mr. Cars that the standard is at least partially met. I do not believe that the petitioner caused the need for the variance, though there may have been some construction of the fence. The need is, is, because of the man-made stream, also for the true stream, as staff has characterized it. And I also do place a lot of emphasis on the fact that, for the rationale for the fence is for public safety, which I do think outweighs a denial of the variance. So for those reasons, I do intend to support the motion as well.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Cars, a quick friendly amendment, if it would be okay. I was asked to make reference to department's recommendation as starting on page eight, to be included with the A and B that you referenced on page nine. Just a technicality for the record, if that's appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Vig.
Yeah, I too intend to support the motion, and I believe that, that the petitioner's exhibit, exhibit showing the layout of the plant on tract one demonstrates the need for the fence and its locations proposed, and there does not appear to be a, another location that would be de minimis over what's, what's proposed. So I think it reinforces my belief that the standards, with particular regard to number seven, are met.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Subject to any other comments by board members, let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes with a seven yea votes. I must read for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Thank you. All right, moving on to case number two. It's case number 2011-110. Is the petitioner Thomas Crossen, or their representative present? If indicated that they are. Thank you. Mr. Barrett, would you please provide the sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fifty-five public hearing notices mailed for this item. We received one hearing notice back in opposition to the request, and one was returned in support of the request. The community council, Girdwood Board of Supervisors, has issued a letter of non-objection to the encroachment, as long as it is no larger than five feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Please proceed with your presentation when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving to the opposite end of town, Girdwood Special Section of the Zoning Code for itself, Table B1, requires a 20-foot front yard setback to allow the applicant to have a setback of 15 feet instead of 20, which is an encroachment of five feet. There is an as-built on page three that very clearly shows the encroachment to the cul-de-sac on Echo Drive, and there are some photos on pages 10 through 14. And I think for our purposes, the most important photos are the one on page 14, which shows the severe slope affecting the property, and also perhaps, well, 11 and 12, which show visually what the encroachment looks like, and due to the surrounding construction and the condition of the road, that the encroachment is not visually obvious. The lot was platted in 1975. It is a legal size and width lot for a duplex. Zoning was enacted in 1982. The property is steeply sloped on the northwest and east sides of the house, so it is easy to assume that the house was built close to the south side of the lot and close to the front yard setback. Further, the lot is oddly shaped, and because it is on a cul-de-sac bulb, has only a small front yard. The case results from an inquiry to the applicant and to the planning department by code enforcement and the building permit divisions regarding an open permit from 1989, and for additional construction, which appears to have begun in 2005, but without a building permit. The 20-foot setback in Girdwood dates from 1982. Even though the current code in Girdwood was only adopted in 2005, the 20-foot front yard setback did exist in previous sections of the, in previous editions of the code. Mr. Crossen purchased the home in 1986, excuse me, purchased the lot in 1987. He began construction in 1985, and then further work into 2005. Unfortunately, we've not been able to find files from either 1989 or 2005, so we're not able to tell or take an educated guess as to how the front yard encroachment occurred. Mr. Crossen did clearly have a permit in 1989, but without being able to find the file or an as-built, we will just have to take it on faith that the encroachment existed at that time and cannot explain why. Moving on to the standards, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, the standard is substantially met. The property is severely sloped on both, on all sides, every side except the road, actually. And again, the photo on page 14 gives a good indication. The lot is a legal-conforming lot of 20,000 square feet, but the slope effect really has shoved the house just to one, literally one end of the lot. The rest of the property, if you look at the parcel map on page two, see where the lot is, how it connects to the cul-de-sac bulb, then where the house is located. Practically speaking, the rest of the lot's unbuildable. There is a lot of slope, there is a great deal of runoff affecting the property. This is Girdwood, high water table, lots of water in the ground. Regarding standard number two, that because of the physical circumstances, strict application would create an exceptional hardship, the standard is substantially met. There are definite physical circumstances affecting the lot and the placement of the house. This slope limitation would affect the location of any reasonably sized house, and this is a relatively modest footprint, 25 by 30 feet. The home is actually three stories, or if you prefer, two stories and a daylight basement, and it's approximately 1,400 square feet in size, according to the property appraisal records. And that's relatively modest for homes in the area, which range as high as 3,000 square feet. So denial of this portion of the variance, or this standard in the variance, could be construed as denying the applicant common rights of enjoyment in that area of Girdwood. Standard three, that the hardship is not self-imposed, this standard is not substantially met, although there are definite physical, physical problems with the property. The second portion of this standard is not met, and the need for it does result from the actions of the applicant. We are unable to locate a 1989 permit, but it does appear the owner had a permit for a single-family home. And since the footprint of the home has not changed, I think we can say that the encroachment did exist back in 89. However, the applicant has a permit, so someone in permitting missed that. However, the standard is not substantially met, because the applicant let that permit expire, and he did not close it out. He is apparently changing the structure without an active permit from single-family to duplex. And part three, he did not obtain a new permit for the 2005 expansion, although it appears he did begin the paperwork for that permit. The application was for a single-family structure, and the permit was never issued. Standard four, that the variance does not adversely affect adjacent property, this is substantially met. There are no building separation issues. There's a great deal of drainage and runoff off of this property due to slope, but that does not appear to be related to the house, and does not appear to affect adjacent properties. There's no clear traffic vision area problem, and the encroachment is not overtly obvious. Girdwood Board of Supervisors did send a letter of no objection, but the standard is still substantially met, even though code enforcement and permitting have open files on this property. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. This is substantially met. This is simply a dimensional request for the front yard setback, and the encroachment and the structure itself do not change the character of the district. Standard six, that the variance, if granted, does not affect the wider area of Anchorage, also substantially met. Again, standard four, as in standard four, no health or safety issues identified, no clear vision area affected, and. issues identified, no clear vision area affected, and there have been no objections from any municipal departments. Standard seven, the variance granted is the minimum that will make possible reasonable use. This also is substantially met. The front corner of the house does encroach about five feet, so this is over ten percent, and we cannot consider it de minimis, but it is not visually obvious. The house has a relatively small footprint, and other homes in the area do appear to be set close to their front yard setback. So, standard three is not met. The department cannot recommend for approval, but should the Board find that all seven standards are met, we have the conditions on pages eight and nine of the application. And because there are open permits on the property, I did not make this a condition, but I would advise the applicant that if the variance is approved, he will need to close out permits with both code enforcement and the building department, and we'll help him with that process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Barrett? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. The open permit is the 1989 permit, then?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, that's correct. It was never closed out.
And subsequent to that, the structure was enlarged in 2005, we believe?
We believe.
Is there no need to assess the conformance with code for the expansion that took place after 1989, or can you just go back to the 1989 permit and close that out?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, normally, yes, but because we have no file, I don't know how building safety and the permit department are going to review this, but they will probably ask for an inspection, even though as a land use area, Girdwood, that's not normally required. They'll want to clean up their books as best as they can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, saying none. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would the petitioner please come forward? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Thomas Crossen. Last name is spelled C-R-O-S-S-E-N.
Good evening, Mr. Crossen. You will have ten minutes for your presentation. Go ahead and get started when you're ready.
Okay. Hello, you just heard my name, and I own the subject property that was built into the front yard setback, having started the project in 1989. It is located at the top of a hill, Echo Ridge Drive in Girdwood. I'm here tonight asking for a variance from that twenty-foot front yard setback, as having at least two of my neighbors have also asked for that variance for the same reason, so that I can renew my permit, as per, I understand the process here from the building permit department, and become compliant with the zoning regulations and the codes. The location error of this building was done with no intention whatsoever to encroach into the setback, and was just totally a sighting error on my part. So, that all being said, there's a couple of things from the report that Mr. Barrett had talked of that I thought maybe I'd like to clear up before I go through with reading of the questions. I purchased the property in 1986. This property is not a duplex. It is the same building that I started in 1989, with the photos that you'll see at the back of my application. The foundation and the poured concrete walls are exactly as they are today, and that was all started in 1989. I had a permit in 1989. In 2005, when I went to try to be in compliance with not having a posted permit, they couldn't find the permit. I paid the fee to get the permit out of archives, and still after looking for a couple of years, they were unable to find this permit that I had obtained in 1989. So it was at that point in time that I was told that I had to make a new application for a new permit, of which would be preempted by having an as-built survey done. And once that as-built survey was done and completed, then I realized that I was encroaching in the front yard setback, so I opened up that can of worms. Before I can get the permit, I have to satisfy this variance request for encroaching in the front yard setback. So... At the time that I got my permit in 1989, my ignorance was such that I didn't realize that that permit had to be renewed every year. I was under the assumption, as were many of the other local people that I was in contact with, once you had the permit, it was a once-and-done type of a format, and that, you know, because it was a land used area, there was no need to have follow-up inspections. There was none of this closing-out business that I was aware of. So I never renewed the permit, not thinking that that was something that I needed to do. So in nineteen, well, in 2005, when the zoning regulations out there had changed, and the city had sent planning and zoning and permitting personnel out to Girdwood to try to tidy up the community, I guess, from their paperwork point of view, they could see that my building was in a process of being constructed, but yet I had no posted building permit. So I informed the inspector at the time that I had a permit, but it hadn't been posted for years. So it was at that time that I tried just to renew the permit, and then we ran into the situation where we can't find the permit, so just start all over. So, I guess at this point, I'll just read through the questions as I answered them as part of the process of me asking for this variance. There exists, question number one. "There exist exceptional, extraordinary physical circumstances on the subject property, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, or slopes, and such physical circumstances that are not applicable to other lands in the same district." My answer was, "When the building was built, the road as platted did not exist. Steep slope was reason to locate the building site as close to the road as possible, but still within the twenty-feet setback. A sighting error was made at this time, due in part to the topography." And just to add to that, the base of my foundation is approximately sixteen feet below the road grade, so not, I knew where the property corners were, and the arc of the cul-de-sac was somewhat of a mystery, but in so locating the corner of that building that is closest to, the closest part of the cul-de-sac, a determination was made that I was well within or well behind that twenty-feet setback and still had extra room. So I was quite alarmed when I got the as-built back to see indeed that I had encroached into that twenty-foot front yard setback. Question number two, "Because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional and undue hardship upon the property owner, and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance." And my answer was, "The building is already existing. To remove the encroachment would destroy the structural strength of the building. It's an eight-inch poured concrete wall, and that corner is integral to keeping the whole structure, you know, square and solid. When built, I thought I was in a greater-than-twenty-foot or twenty-foot setback zone. Also, similar setback issues have occurred with some of my neighbors' variances granted." Number three, "The hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience." My answer was, "To cut off the corner of the building, to be compliant would destroy the building. It would not be able to be moved." Question number four, "The variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code." My answer, "The variance, if granted, will not and has not had any effect on any adjacent property. Will not have any drainage issues because of this encroachment. The corner of the building encroaching, 2.2 feet, is not visually evident." And just to point out, I guess, at this point, it's not one whole side of the front or the side of the building. It's just the corner as it approaches to the arc of the cul-de-sac that is encroaching in that 2.2. I don't know how far back either side, the side of the building, or the front of the building, you'd have to go before you'd be at that twenty feet, but my guess is probably somewhere in the vicinity of a couple of feet in both directions from that corner. Question number five, "The variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of this code, will not change the character of the zoning district in which the property is located, and will not permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies." My answer was, "Granting this variance would not change the land use." And question number six, "The variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage." My answer was, "The variance will have no impact on any aspects of health, safety, and welfare of the people of Anchorage or of Girdwood." And then finally, question number seven, "The variance, if granted, is the minimum variance that would make possible a reasonable use of the land." My answer was, "If the variance is granted, it would be a minimum amount to allow the same reasonable use of the property as my neighbors. No further work will be done to increase this encroachment. The deck above the corner of the building that is encroaching in the twenty-foot front yard setback serves as a roof for the side and the corner of the building. To remove this deck or roof would adversely affect the structure by allowing the weather to impact these areas. This deck and roof is off the road grade, ten feet, and extends out over three feet from the corner, which is on the as-built at encroaching over two feet, 2.2 feet, I believe. So..." That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crossen.
Yeah, so, once again, all I'm trying to do here is just become compliant. Didn't realize that I wasn't in compliant until I got the knock on the door asking for where my land use permit posting was, and that's all started this ball rolling in the direction that it has rolled. So I would love to close the permit out. The building has not been completed yet. I've been out of state for a number of years, and it's just been kind of sitting there, so I'm hopeful that I can get this variance, I can get a new land use permit, and along with this variance, and I can get it all closed out and continue to be a property taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Crossen. Do any board members have questions for the petitioner? I do have a question, Mr. Crossen. It may be for either you or staff. You referenced a few neighbors have gone through this variance request process before.
Yes.
Do you know specifics about those neighbors or their property identifications? Anything that might help Mr. Barrett answer the question for us as to the outcome of those variance requests?
As far as them were, both of, the two that I'm privy to, both of them were granted. And as far as I know, at least one, if not both of them, were front yard setback variance requests. One was on Echo Ridge Drive, which I have a copy of that one here, and the other one was at the, is the neighbor just down the street or down the hill from me at the end of St. Moritz, which was, that was probably fifteen years ago now, and that was also a front yard setback issue as to the corner, and I think that was the whole side of their home was in that twenty-foot setback. But Mr. Barrett might have more information. I do have some paperwork in here, if you'd like to see it.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Chairman, we generally don't go into those because we do not consider them to be precedent-setting.
Sure.
But yes, there are a few. I recall one variance and one non-conforming determination, but Mr. Crossen's recollection is accurate enough.
Thank you. That's the sport I was looking for, I guess, in speaking to the lack of peculiarity about your property. It's common within the area that the slope is experienced on your property as well.
We're probably not math wizards or surveyors out there, and yeah, the topography is very unique, and, you know, you want to be as far away from, you know, the public roadway, but you also want to balance that with trying to be as close to it as possible as well.
Any other questions by board members? Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I apologize that you're missing page six of the variance application. It's on the backside of page five, and I don't recall if I missed it or dropped it, but Mr. Crossen's reading of the conditions matched what's in the application, so we do have the original on file. This is not important for the purpose of the variance, but Mr. Crossen will want to correct that the property appraiser is carrying his property as a duplex, so he's probably paying more in taxes than he needs to be. The reason it came to my attention was because the permit from 2005 said "single family." Property appraiser records said duplex, so in quizzing the property appraiser's office, they responded with the email on page nineteen. And I'm, since it's not germane to the applica-- excuse me, to the variance, it's, I'm not worried about it, but I'm going to ask, in addition to the 1989 and the 2005 permits, I'm going to ask Mr. Crossen to contact the property appraiser and make that, get that straightened out as well.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you, Mr. Crossen. I don't believe there are any more questions for you at this time. We'll go ahead and open up the hearing for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this case? Okay, please come forward, whatever you... Good evening. Please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes for your testimony.
Okay. My name is Wendy Jennings, J-E-N-N-I-N-G-S.
Good evening, Ms. Jennings. Please go ahead.
I didn't know about this issue. I'm here for something else, but I do live in Girdwood, and I know Mr. Crossen. I've known him for years, and, you know, Girdwood has some of the unique building issues that, knowing that he started this in 1989, I really feel for him and hope that he's granted this variance. It sounds reasonable to me, and that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Does the Board have any questions for Ms. Jennings? Mr. Barrett? Okay, saying no questions. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this case? Okay, saying none. Mr. Crossen, I believe you have about fifteen seconds for rebuttal, if you feel the need. Otherwise, okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this case, and the matter now rests with the Board. If a Board member would please put forward a positive motion. Mr. Vig, thank you. Please go ahead and state your motion.
Thank you. In case number 2011-110, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2109060, Table B1, which requires a twenty-foot front yard setback to allow a front yard setback of fifteen feet, an encroachment of five feet for a home under construction, subject to the recommendations on pages eight and nine of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Danny, did you second that motion?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Mr. Vig, would you like to go ahead and speak to your motion?
Thank you. I agree with Staff's analysis on finding, one, that the standard is substantially met due to the extreme slope that's present on the lot, provided very little alternative for locating the house. Standard number two, strict application of that code would create an exceptional or undue hardship. I believe that that's also substantially met. That relocation of the house is not a viable option, and this home is somewhat smaller than others in the neighborhood, so it does not appear to be out of character and would be an undue hardship to remedy. Standard number three, hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. not result from actions of the applicant. I believe that standard three is at least partially met. I'm interested in other board members' opinions, but apparently there was an application that was made in 1989, and although the records of that are not available, I believe that the owner made a good faith effort to comply with the standards at the time. And I know that in a situation where the road isn't built up, it could be very difficult to determine where the cul-de-sac actually is. Standard number four, I believe is substantially met that the variance will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. Standard number five, I agree also is substantially met, that it will not change the character of the zoning district. And standard six, that it will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. I believe that that is substantially met. And standard seven, that it's the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. I believe that that's also substantially met. It's a very small amount of the corner of the house, and I feel it's a minimal amount. So, I do intend to support the motion. I'm interested in other ideas on standard number three.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. I agree with Staff and with Mr. Vig on all of the points made, except, with the exception of number three. And I have looked at the plot planned and the size of Mr. Cross's house, and I believe that he has the minimum amount of home for that lot. He could have, compared to some of his neighbors, built a much larger structure and probably encroached into the setback a lot more. And the fact that he did start the project prior to the road being built would have been very difficult to assess where the right of way for the edge of the property was. So, I do plan to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Any other board member comments? Question for the board, Mr. Barrett did have two, what appeared to be recommendations that the petitioner seemed to agree to during the hearing regarding closure of the permit and also coordination with the appraiser. Do any board members find a need to formalize that in terms of official department recommendation being added to the motion? If not, okay. Mr. Carrs, you have a comment?
Yes, let's figure out the microphone. I also intend to support the motion, concurring with the findings of Staff, Mr. Vig, and Ms. Denny, and with regard to standard three. I think, I believe, Mr. Vig, you kind of touched on some of the items that I find way in my decision in finding that standard three is met. And, you know, the topography on the lot from the photo is such that the logical location of the home is towards the front of the lot. And as Ms. Denny said, the footprint is very small for the house, about as small as it practically could be. Quite often, we find these variances come in after the fact, and I think sometimes the board's position, my position, is different whether it comes in before or after, but I try and look at the variance, you know, taking that out of the picture, and that, you know, if this was to come in before the house was built, would it make sense to grant this variance? And I would find, my opinion would be that I would find that it's warranted. And then lastly, again, the shape of the lot at the end of the cul-de-sac adds to the peculiarity of the lot. So, I do intend to support the motion. I'm not sure if you got an answer on conditions three and four, but I'd like to ask Mr. Vig if he'd consider adding those as friendly amendments. I believe condition three was to close out the building permits, and condition four was to resolve the number of units with the property assessor. I don't know if you had considered those or not, Mr. Vig, in your, making your motion.
I would not object to those.
Ms. Denny, would, do you have any objection to that friendly amendment?
No, I do not.
Jill, is Mr. Carr's language appropriate?
As good as it's going to be.
Unless there are any other board member comments on the case, let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes with seven yea votes. I'll read for the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Board members doing okay? Five-minute break. All right. All right, if the board's ready, we'll go ahead and resume the meeting. Brings us to case 2011-111. Is the petitioner Larry Peterson present?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson's indicated he is here. Mr. Barrett, could you please provide sufficiency of notice?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Forty-nine public hearing notices were mailed for this item. It was posted and advertised on the MEI website. In response to the public hearing notices, we received three in opposition to the variance request. We received a letter of non-objection from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Please proceed with your presentation when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize that somehow this report got through without the automatic page numbering. So, we're going to have to just kind of count pages as we go through it. There is an as-built on page three, and on the backside of that, page four, you can see a heavy magic marker line dealing with a portion of the variances, dealing with setback. It's not related to the stream or the other part of variance one. Before I go any further, I don't believe we have seen a fence variance in Girdwood before. Girdwood's different, as if you couldn't tell from reading this. It's really not as complicated as I wrote it, and there's really not as much going on here as it appears. There are two fences, a wooden fence that probably has grandfather rights, and that fence is in both variances one and two, and is probably grandfathered for both variances one and two, and there is a new wrought iron fence that applies to, or that is affecting variance number one A and B. And since we've not seen a fence variance, I imagine this is new to you, so on the front page, we'll just walk through them real quickly. Variance one A is to allow fences to encroach the front yards on Brenner Circle and Alieska Highway. If you look at the variance, you'll see that the property, even though it's got an odd trapezoid shape, it fronts on two streets, Brenner, and in what would conventionally be considered the backyard, it fronts on the Alieska Highway. That's a through lot by definition in the code, and both of those are front yards with front yard setbacks. Normally, when we see a corner lot, we see a primary front yard and a secondary front yard, and the secondary front yard only has half the setback of the primary front yard. That's not the case when it's a through lot, you have the full setback on both sides, and that's further complicated by the fact that it's the Alieska Highway. Under the zoning code, the property facing Alieska would only have a 20-foot front yard setback, but because it's the Alieska Highway, it has a special 25-foot setback. So, that's variance one A, the fence encroaching Brenner and Alieska Highway. One B, in Girdwood, and this goes back 10 years, the Girdwood Code started in 2002 and was adopted in 2005, and I did some research on this. The folks in Girdwood, this is Girdwood-initiated and Girdwood-inspired, were trying to limit fences, total fences, total length of fences, within the yard setbacks, regardless of the height of the fence, or whether it was at the property line or setback five feet or 15 feet. If it was in the yard setback, and regardless of the height, Girdwood wanted the length of fence limited to 30% of the property's perimeter. So, if you had a property and measured the outside property lines, and it was 300 feet in length when you added up the four sides or the five sides together, you could only have fences if they were going to be within the yard setbacks, and regardless of whether they were four feet or five feet or six feet, the fences could only be 30% of that length. So, in that example, a yard with a perimeter length of 300 feet could only have fences 30% of 300 feet, which I don't have my calculator with me, but I believe would be something in the neighborhood of 90 feet. Girdwood just was placing severe restrictions on fences at that time, and that has carried forward. We're still working with the same code. Finally, variance number two, to allow a fence within the 25-foot stream protection setback. Only the wooden fence in the front yard on Brenner Circle is affecting that variance. That does not apply to the wrought iron fence, the newer fence. That portion of the code goes back to 1982, the stream setback. So, the wood fence probably has grandfather rights for one A and one B, but I'm throwing them in the variance just in case they don't. The fence, there might have been an original fence within the 25-foot stream protection setback, but the quality and condition of the fence that is there now, it appears that that fence is newer than 1982, so we do not believe that that fence would be grandfathered, and that's in for the variance request. That's part of it all. If you would turn to page three, to the as-built, as best I can, I'll just try and walk through those three variances now, having just stated them from the front page. On the south property line, the bottom property line, just above the land surveyor's seal, you can see the symbol for the wood fence running along the lot line. That fence for variances one A and one B, the yard encroachments and the 30% length of fence in the yard setback is probably grandfathered, but I'm throwing it in. That portion of the fence is the stream encroachment as well, down near Brenner Circle is where the stream is located. You can see the culvert under Mr. Peterson's driveway. The stream is not actually on his property. It never is, but the fence is within 25 feet of it, so, well, we need the variance. Enough said. I don't want to downplay too much that the stream is not on his property, but it clearly is not. Then, as we move to the east along the property, you can see the wood fence transitions into the wrought iron fence, and that is for variances one A and one B. The fence is within the setback for the Alieska Highway, and the length of it does exceed the 30% allowed under the Girdwood Code. And then on page four, on the backside of the as-built, on the heavy dark lines, I've drawn what the legal setbacks would be for the fence, the wrought iron fence, and the yard setbacks. The setbacks at 10, 25, and 10 feet would take the lot out of the yard setbacks, so the 30% requirement would not apply if the fence was at that setback. It would address both of the problems. It would meet the yard setbacks, and since it's out of the setbacks, it would not need the 30% perimeter. So, I hope that's at least fairly clear. I'm sure you'll quiz me on it when we get to that part. The lot was platted, and the house was built under the old R11 Ternigan Arm zoning regulations, replaced by 2109, the Girdwood section of the code in 2005. There do appear to be house and step encroachments on the north and south yards. It's difficult to tell because the as-built has been reduced in size, but we're almost certain that those, we're certain that those encroachments are grandfathered, and that can be discussed when Mr. Peterson comes in for his grandfather rights on the wood fence. We've already discussed how Brenner Circle is encroached. The wood fence may have non-conforming rights there. We've talked at length about the 30%. There is another landscaping requirement from 2005 that calls for certain amounts of retention of existing vegetation, both in the yard and along the Alieska Highway setback, but aerial photos clearly indicate that that was all cleared out long before 2005, so we're certain that the house is grandfathered for that as well. The lot is legal in size and shape and conforms under current code. The stream is in Brenner Circle. The property is a through lot. We've already discussed that, and it does have the additional front yard setback of Alieska Highway, plus that's a 25-foot setback, not just 20. Covered variances one A, one B, and variance two for the stream. I would just like to get right into the variances, into the standards, and I will try to keep them as separate as I can in my mind as I speak. The variance, the standard for, variance standard number one, existing, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. The standard is not met for the wrought iron fence and variances one A and one B. Now, the wrought iron fence doesn't actually encroach Brenner. It's only encroaching the Alieska Highway, but that's part of variance one A, and it is part of the 30% yard perimeter variance. It is not affecting the stream. The standard is substantially met for variance two, which is the wood fence encroaching the 25-foot setback. There aren't any physical conditions of the lot that relate to the wrought iron fence and variances one A and one B. The landscaping on the property was pre-existing, so when Mr. Peterson put the fence in, he chose the path of least resistance and avoided existing landscaping when he put the fence in the ground. And you can see that in the drawing on page four, the one with the heavy lines showing the 10 and 25-foot setbacks. If Mr. Peterson has to honor the legal setbacks, he's going to go right through a large planter. Okay, variance two, I think we've discussed that at length, the wood fence along Brenner. The fence does not significantly impact the stream. It is within the 25-foot setback, but the stream is not on the property, and watershed management has no objection to that request. Standard two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application would create a hardship, an undue hardship for the applicant. Again, that is not met for variances one A and one B, that is the modern fence, the wrought iron one. However, the variance is substantially met for variance two, the wood fence. There are conforming locations for the wrought iron fence, and moving the fence in itself is not an exceptional hardship. Denial of the variances for the wrought iron fence does not prevent the applicant from having the large, modern home that he has. Standard two, excuse me, variance two, the stream impact, again, there is no impact to the stream from the wood fence for that standard, and watershed management does not have a problem with it. Regarding standard three, that the standard is not self-imposed, the standard is not met, excuse me, the standard is met for the wood fence encroaching Brenner Circle, the stream at Brenner Circle. However, that is a pre-existing condition that Mr. Peterson inherited it when he purchased However, that is a pre-existing condition that Mr. Peterson inherited it when he purchased the property, and because watershed management does not have a problem with that encroachment, we're saying that the standard is substantially met for variance two. Regarding the wrought iron fence in the side and backyard, the Alieska backyard, which is the second front yard, we do not believe that standard is substantially met. In my description of that standard, I was lifting portions of Mr. Peterson's conversations with various municipal departments, his discussions with the surveyor, having utilities staked out and then putting in the fence, and I severely condensed that chronology. Mr. Peterson has supplied the chronology in full, and that was handed out to you tonight, and I'll let him address that. I'll simply leave off on that part by saying that whichever chronology you went with, mine or Mr. Peterson's corrected version of that, standard three is still not met. In my version of it, in reading the application, I was assuming, based on the language that Mr. Peterson was getting, either incorrect or incomplete information from the muni department, but that would still fault the variance back to him. In Mr. Peterson's correction, he is saying that he installed the fence. Then there was an anonymous complaint. This is a code complaint case. Then he began investigating what was wrong with the fence and trying to see how he could address it. So in either instance, standard three is not met for variances 1A and 1B, which again are the wrought iron fence. Standard four, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The standard is substantially met for the wood fence, and it's partially met for the wrought iron fence. For the wood fence, there's no impact to the stream. For the wrought iron fence, it's only partially met because there have been three neighborhood letters in objection, and this does result from a code complaint for the location of that wrought iron fence. And once again, the Girdwood Land Use, excuse me, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors did issue a letter of non-objection. Standard five, the variance does not change the code or the intent of the code, and is in keeping with the character of this zoning district. That standard is substantially met for all the variances and all the fences. This is purely dimensional requests. The yard is attractive. The fences are attractive, and they do not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the wider area of the municipality of Anchorage. That is substantially met for both variances. No safety issues have been identified. The traffic vision area is not impacted. There have been no objections from any municipal departments. And standard seven, that this is the minimum variance to make possible a reasonable use of the land. For the wood fence encroaching the stream on Brenner Circle, we believe that the standard is substantially met. The fence actually helps to keep people away from the stream bank, and that's an important safety function, as this stream also serves as a drainage way for Brenner Circle. So it's not just that we're protecting a stream, we're protecting drainage for that neighborhood. However, the standard is not substantially met for 1A and 1B. The wrought iron fence is a very nice appearance. It makes the yard look good, but a reasonable use of the land is for an appropriate-sized home and garage on a large lot. And while the fence at the legal setback is disruptive of the even smooth flow of the yard and does cut through a very nice, large planter, there is a legal setback for that wrought iron fence. So because several of the standards have not been met for variances 1A and 1B, the department is recommending denial, and I will add that we're confident that the wood fence is grandfathered, but I'm putting that in there as part of the approval for the board's consideration. And so should the board find that all seven standards are met, the conditions are on the last page, the one with the signatures on it, which is page eight of the report, of the department report, but would probably be about nine or ten if these were automatically numbered. Sorry I ran on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you, Mr. Barrett, for walking us through the case. Any board members have questions for Mr. Barrett?
Don't be shy.
I do have one. Maybe that'll give other board members a chance to formulate theirs. You discussed the special application of setback, additional setback, in relation to the Alieska Highway, and given this lot, of course, that's an additional front yard setback, as has been discussed. Does that same additional or corresponding additional setback apply to rear yards if, in fact, this were considered a rear yard?
Mr. Chairman, no. If there were no street there, if there were no Alieska Highway, if there were no local road, it would just be a normal rear yard, and there probably would not be an encroachment because in Girdwood, it's different down there. Side yards and rear yards can actually be smaller than certain code minimums if they are offset on the corresponding yard. So you can have a smaller side yard on one side if you add that distance on the other side yard. Likewise, you can have a smaller rear yard setback if the house makes up for it with an additional front yard setback of the same amount.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board member questions? Mr. Cars?
Yes, Mr. Barrett. With respect to variance 1B, what is the allowable fence limit for this lot?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cars, I left, I calculated this one with Land Use Review, the people who look at that item, and I left my comments with them, so I can't tell you. I neglected to get the numbers back from her, but it's fairly substantial. It's well beyond thirty percent because the fence encroaches both the south lot line setback, it encroaches the southeast lot line setback, and all of the Alieska frontage setback, and a small portion of the north lot line setback. So it is over thirty percent. I'm confident I'm remembering that number correctly. For the resolution, should the board approve the variance requests, I can actually put that exact measurement in a where-as clause. That way you'll be able to see it, but since you won't be able to make a finding on it, I won't put it down as a finding of fact. I think that would be satisfactory. It would work for me.
And through the chair, Mr. Barrett, the thirty percent yard perimeter limit, and I apologize if you went over this definition, the yard perimeter, is that the, is that the setback? Is that the perimeter of the setback or the perimeter of the actual lot dimensions?
Mr. Chairman, it's the perimeter of the actual lot lines, the lot dimensions. So just-
Thank you.
-take the lot lines and straighten them out and measure them.
Okay, thank you.
Additional clarification, Mr. Barrett. So the thirty percent application then is to total fence length or just fence length within the setback?
Mr. Chairman, just for that portion of the fence within the setback is limited to thirty percent.
Okay. Any other questions by board members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would the petitioner please come forward? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Larry Peterson, and I spell my last name, P.E.T.E.R.S.E.N.
Good evening, Mr. Peterson. You'll have ten minutes for your presentation, and we ask that you speak to the seven standards as addressed by Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce my wife. This is Sue Liebner. She's my co-petitioner. We have a handout we would like to present to you. We have a copy for each and every member and a copy for Mr. Barrett. May we do so, sir?
Yes, please do bring it to Jill here in the center. And again, we'll have to keep a copy for thirty days.
We don't, to the chair, we don't need those copies back. This addendum that my wife is handing you are before and after pictures of the lot. I just wanted you to see the condition of the yard prior to the fence that was installed and the landscaping that we put in. I also want to mention that Mr. Barrett has instructed you that there were two addendums that were handed out. One of them is important because it explains to you that I did receive approval from the Girdwood Land Use Committee, in addition to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Both have approved my variance. And the other addendum has the correct timeline that Mr. Barrett explained to you, and that will give you the timeline from the time that I first purchased the house up until today's activity. Real brief, the history of the house, the house was built in 1996. I purchased, my wife and I purchased the house in 2010. I began the research back in October of 2010 of putting a fence in. I had a survey conducted, and then I researched Title 21. I did not realize at the time that Girdwood had a separate Title 21 land use regulation. I assumed that I could use the Title 21 from the Anchorage, the Anchorage Municipal Code, and I was in error. As I conducted my survey, I realized that I was sixty foot in on one end from the limit of the highway and fifty-three feet in from the other limit of the highway. I installed the fence inside my property line. I am thirteen and a half feet from the property line on one end and another seven feet from the property line on the end. I think that's the northwest corner. I called for locates, but I never considered that I had two front yards. I thought my front yard was Runner Circle, 138 Brenner. That's my address. And then I was surprised to find out when I got the anonymous complaint that I had a front and a secondary front yard. And assuming that that secondary front yard was my rear yard, that's why I installed the fence. I want you to know that there was never any deceit or intent to mislead the municipality or the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. We thought that was our backyard. Never realized that I had two front yards, and it was confusing for me. I mean, I would assume that no reasonable person would be expected to know that they have more than one front yard, and Title 21, I didn't catch it. Perhaps I should have, I should have known, but I didn't. On page four, Mr. Barrett mentioned that there is a legal fence setback. It's on page four of your packet, and you'll see the drawings that they made, ten, twenty-five, and ten. My wife and I have actually gone out there, and we have measured that and paced that off. And the fence would actually be further back. It would be a foot and a half off the retaining wall. Would in fact go through the planter, and it would be, that circle that you see near the northwest corner is actually a tree, and it would have to come in behind a tree. At this time, I review the variance standards one through seven. I would refer you to pages, and I know they're not numbered for you, but they're pages fifty-four Standard number one, there exists exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, or slope. And such physical circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same district. My response, my property is surrounded by streams, wetlands, and utilities. I purchased the house on April 6, 2010. All flower beds and retaining walls were already in place, and to avoid these obstacles, I surveyed and selected the best location for the fence. Standard number two, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. My response, complying with a twenty-five-foot setback from the property line will eliminate two-thirds of the fence. I installed the fence to protect my family and pets from moose, bear, and stray dogs. Last year on June 3, while walking my dogs, I was attacked by a moose. Placing myself between a moose and a dog resulted in injuries to my left hand and thigh. I was sent to the emergency room, treated, and released. My thigh is healed, but my thumb on my left hand remains disabled. The attack left me wary and somewhat hesitant around wildlife. It is not unusual to find moose and bear on my property, but the worst nuisance is stray and unleashed dogs. Although part of Anchorage, the lease law is essentially ignored. Each time I walk my dogs, it is not uncommon to have unleashed dogs harass my pets, and without defense, dogs were entering my yard, chasing my pets, destroying my gardens, and defecating and urinating on my property. Standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute an inconvenience. I cannot control the wildlife and actions of other people's dogs. The owners sometimes make poor choices, and I either live with the problem or I try to protect my pets and family. Yes, it's an inconvenience, but it is also dangerous, and no law enforcement officer is going to make a stray dog his immediate priority or concern. It's not unusual for us to have moose and bear in our yard. In fact, we had a vendor there from Avid, and Avid, and he was working on our sound system, and he was chased into the house by a bear. This was before I put the fence up. Item number four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code. My response, my neighbors on either side of me have submitted letters of support, and you'll find them as enclosures within my packet. Both have agreed that the fence is attractive and not obtrusive. They both agree that the fence and other improvements to the grounds have increased their property values. Their respective comments and others who approach me while I work in the yard all agree that the fence is not injurious to the surrounding neighborhood. At the May 2011 meeting of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, I addressed, or I asked three of the members if there are any objections to the lawn and the fence, and there were none. No one except this one anonymous complaint has voiced an objection. And I need to make clear that at the time the fence was being installed, it wasn't yet installed when I approached these Girdwood Board of Supervisors after the meeting. So I don't want to mislead anybody that they saw the fence as it is at this point, but as you know, that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors has approved my variance. Item number five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of this code, will not change the character of the zoning district in which the property is located, and will not permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. There was never an attempt, this is my response, there was never an attempt to deceive or ignore the tenants of the code. To borrow a term from another variance application, I would suggest that I'm guilty of excusable neglect. I consider myself a reasonable and prudent person, and in good faith, I tended to do the right thing. I paid for a survey, called for locates, and considered the neighbors in the surrounding homes. I made a reasonable but mistaken interpretation of the code provision in Title 21. In Title 2109060, Dimension Standards Paragraph A, applicability, the house was built in 1996, and I thought along with the structure, a fence would be conforming with the setback. I failed to acknowledge the footnote in the additional specification standards defining the required special setback from the property line of twenty-five feet. I mistakenly thought it was from the edge of the trail system. I mistakenly applied my setback standard in 2109070, sixteen point six feet from the forward edge of the bike path. My property line is ten feet back from the edge of the bike trail, and the additional six point six feet to my fence line placed me in compliance by sixteen point six to twenty-three point six feet across- 6.6 feet to my fence line placed me in compliance by 16.6 to 23.6 feet across the front of the fence line. This I thought prudent and reasonable. Item number 6, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. As mentioned before, the fence and improvement to the yard have pleased the neighbors. I've had no objections from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, no adverse comments from their land use committee chairperson. I, I cannot say that that is, there was an objection from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, board members. There was a vote 4 to 1, so one person did vote against that and I don't want to mislead you here. No adverse comments from the land use committee chairperson. Personal walking the trail have all had favorable comments. No one has approached me with a concern. I am disappointed that the person who made the complaint did afford themselves the opportunity to discuss this with me privately. My last comment is one sentence, sir. May I proceed?
Uh, yes, please conclude.
The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible or reasonable use of the land. I understand and will ensure that no further variances are required. None of this was intentional and I acted in good faith and at a considerable expense, thinking that I was in compliance with 21. In closing, I would, I, I ask that you approve my variance.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, sir.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Peterson? Give us just a minute here.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't understand you.
Any questions by board members? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Barrett, do you have any, any questions for Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions for Mr. Peterson, but as Mr. Carr's raised it, I tried to do a quick eyeballing estimate of the amount of fence that is within that or that exceeds the 30% that's within the yard setbacks. This is an estimate, but I'm saying maybe as much as 60% is the amount of the encroachment. So about double what would normally be allowed, normal to the 30%. Thank you.
Sir, may I rebut that? Because I do have Mr. Barrett's notes and I can provide them to him. I have a copy of those and he has the specifications here.
Okay.
This is what you said before, 77.3. And then here you'll see that perimeter is that, in that, let's see, here's your notes, 224 and 47%. Thank you, Officer. Read that for the record. Mr. Chairman, what Mr. Peterson's handed me is an email with those calculations. The, the lot perimeter is what I was eyeballing it at. That's 477 feet. Take the lot lines and stretch them out. 30% of that amount would be 143 feet and that's also the amount I came up with eyeballing. It appears that the existing wooden fence and the wrought iron fence are located within the setbacks for a length of approximately 224 feet, which would be 47%, exceeding the 30% by about 17 feet. So when there's more time and when I have a scale, I will go back and re-measure it because I was coming up with close to 60%. In any case, it exceeds the 30%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any follow-up questions, Mr. Carr's about?
No.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, I do have a question. What, how tall is that wrought iron fence?
It's five foot, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other questions by board members? Oh, Mr. Barrett.
All right, Mr. Chairman. With Mr. Peterson's permission, I'd like to enter this as an exhibit in case I'm wrong on my calculations.
Mr. Peterson, are you agreeable to that, entering?
Yes, sir, I have that on my email.
Okay, thank you.
My excuse, sir.
Yes, yes, Mr. Peterson, thank you. We'll open up for public testimony here in just a second. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? If so, please come forward. Hello again, please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
It's Wendy Jennings, J.E.N.N.I.N.G.S.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. You'll have three minutes for your testimony.
Okay, well, looking through this paperwork, I'd like to make a comment about someone else's comment, Mr. Kessler. And I think that if you would note on there, I think this was received after, it's on this separate sheet here. But if you look at that, it struck me, no fence in Girdwood. And I think that there are some individuals in Girdwood who feel like there should be no fences in Girdwood, period. And, you know, it is okay for him to have. So, and then in keeping with that, looking at this picture, I don't know, it says page 5 of 5 and then down here it says 6. Do you guys have this? It's, I don't know, maybe 10 pages in. Says free software right here. I don't know.
Enclosure 6, page 5?
Yes.
Okay.
5 of 5. And you see his fence out there and then there's a tape mark where he's made, where I guess if he's inside the, inside the correct setback, that that's where the fence is going to be, inside.
Ms. Jennings, excuse me, could you please speak in the microphone? Thank you.
Inside, it, it shows the tape measure where the fence will be if he's within the setback limit. If he moves the fence inside the tree, that's the only tree on his lot. The individual that built the home took down every tree except this one. That's the only tree. And just stating that it's really not fair that he can enjoy his tree, but every other dog in Girdwood can enjoy the tree. It really is not going to change the look of it from the highway if he moves the fence back. When you look at his home, you're still going to see the fence in the same basic area. I really like the fence. I live next door and I understand the issue with the dogs. I have dogs. My dog was attacked, 62 stitches in his face. There are a lot of stray dogs and animals there, a lot. And it, he's got small dogs and he, I don't think he even said he's got little dogs. Mine was a big standard poodle, but the dogs in Girdwood don't like poodles. So my dog was on a leash and the other dogs aren't. And same with his dogs, they're on leashes, but in order to really protect our families, a fence would be the only way. And I hope that you'll approve his fence.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Any questions by board members? Mr. Carr's.
Excuse me, Ms. Jennings, before you sit down? As you may have heard, Mr. Barrett comment, this was a, a, the first time we've had a case like this come before us in, in many years, a fence variance in Girdwood. And I, I believe one of the reasons that we're seeing this is this, this is a variance from what I'd call some pretty restrictive requirements on fences that have been placed specific to Girdwood and specific, specifically put in by Girdwood residents, I'm assuming. And as you mentioned, we have a comment from, from a resident somewhere who I believe is probably at the opposite end of the spectrum on his or her belief on fences from some other people. I guess my, and this, this, the case that's before us tonight, we as, we as a board have to find that all seven standards are met and we have to apply the code requirements, what I'm calling, my personal definition of kind of restrictive requirements on fences. Do you, do you agree with the Girdwood code requirements for fences regarding the setback requirements?
Well, I think that the intent of the, of the fence issue is not to have something obnoxious. And this fence is not obnoxious in any way. You can see clear through it to his yard and it's not like a chain link fence. It's very tasteful and I think that that should be taken into account. And I think what the Girdwood people are saying is they don't want a bunch of just fences. I mean, the wooden fence is almost obnoxious to me between our property, but it, it goes this way. You don't see it from the road. It's really not a visible fence, I guess. But the one in his front yard is highly visible and it's very tasteful and, he didn't put the wooden fence in, by the way. It's very tasteful and, and you can see the whole property. You can see all the way through, back to behind his property. I mean, you can see the mountains. There's not blocking anything. I think the intent is not to have obnoxious fences everywhere that, you know, could be falling down and, you know, fences tend to look tacky after a while. This is not one of those.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Mr. Barrett, any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Jennings, for your testimony. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
John Wollery, that's W.O.O.L.E.R.Y. I did actually come here to testify, but I do drive by there every day and I grew up across the street. And yeah, it is probably the most attractive property on the whole highway. I mean, I can't imagine my family's complaining about it. And what he said about the dogs and the wildlife, I, I see a moose on that bike path probably once to twice a week, every day, every week. And I've seen bears, I see dogs everywhere. I've seen drunk people walking down that bike path in front of his house. I mean, that'd be reason enough for me to have a fence there. And as far as it being an encroachment, like the lady just said, from the street, it's going to look the same either way. And it's quite a ways back from the bike path. So I see no reason to object to it, so I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wollery. If you'd hold on just a second here, we'll see if there are any questions. No? Okay, Mr. Barrett? Mr. Peterson, I saw you raise some concern based on one of the comments. Perhaps 30 seconds to address that, that concern would be, would be appropriate.
Through the chair to Mr. Carr's. Mr. Carr's, because of this issue, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, Ms. Zakarle, she's one of the co-chairs, they have decided that they wanted to reopen this issue, not the fence itself, but the issue of personnel that have fences, that, that have retaining walls, that have landscape within the city of Girdwood. And the comment was made that the intent was never intended to be restrictive in nation, in nature and that perhaps situations such as this should be on a case-by-case basis. Now, I don't know if that's in their minutes or not, but that was the conversation and you'll probably, I know you're going to see that Title 21 be revisited by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no one else from the public wishing to testify, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The matter now rests with the board. I'll look for a positive motion from a board member. And suspect it might take a minute or so for that to come forward. And if the board will remember that a motion is just a starting point. Ms. Williams, thank you. Please state your motion.
I move, we grant a variance from AMC 21.09.070 to allow reduced yard setbacks for fences facing Brenner Circle and Alieska Highway and fences to exceed 30% yard perimeter limit and AMC 21.45.210 to allow a fence within the 25-foot stream protection setback. Subject to the department's recommendations on pages 7 and 8 of the staff packet or the planning staff analysis, if the two don't, two-page numbers don't mess up, match up.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Still looking for a second from a board member? Mr. Carr's, thank you. Ms. Williams, would you like to open discussion?
Sure. Well, I'm sure it's not surprise, but I am struggling with this one, so I hope to have some input from the board members and I'm not sure yet how I will vote on this motion. For standard 1 and variances 1A and B, I believe that the standard may at least partially be met. I think there are some exceptional circumstances that this property is subject to, given the second yard frontage on Alieska Highway, which would appear to be a backyard to most folks, given their address on Brenner Circle. And I agree with staff on part 2 that that standard is substantially met for the wood fence and the stream issue. For finding number 2, I believe that the standard may be partially met, again, for the wrought iron fence due to, again, the shape of the yard and the second yard frontage on Alieska Highway. I also do think that how their, their property is situated does restrict their ability to build a fence to protect family and animals from the wildlife and other issues that were raised by the petitioner and also by, by the public. So I do believe there may be some, like I said, it might be partially met. And then again, I do agree with staff for variance number 2, that, that, that the standard is substantially met for the wood fence and the stream variance issue. Standard number 3, I, again, there may be some, it might be partially met as well. I do think that the petitioner did do substantial amount of research and tried to comply with the code here, as far as all the research with the code and hiring a surveyor to try to, to comply with the standards. And to a substantial expense that I, that I'm not sure would be fair in this circumstance to make him tear down again because of the situation of the lot and the two front yards frontages. And going with staff again for variance number 2, I do believe that standard is substantially met for the reasons that staff has described. Standard 4, I agree with staff for the reasons that they have described. Standard 5, I do believe that is substantially met. I think that Ms. Jennings, sorry, wrong standard. Standard 5, I do believe that's substantially met because again, that's a a dimensional, not a use variance. Standard six, I also believe that that's substantially met. There are no health, safety, or welfare, any hindrances to those caused by the fence, and in fact, it does protect the safety of the family and their animals. And also, and then for standard number five, or sorry, standard number seven, I am not, I agree with staff there that it's not, the standard isn't substantially met for variances one A and one B, because I think you could move the, comply with the code provisions and still be able to have yard space. So this is the one that I, I'm struggling with the most, I guess. And then for variance two, I do agree with staff that that's substantially met. So if you can make any sense of my confusing explanations, I do, you know, like I said at the beginning, I'm not quite sure how I'll vote on this motion yet.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Definitely room for more discussion. I appreciate that. Mr. Cars, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will kind of echo a number of Ms. Williams' comments, and I'll actually go for the low-lying fruit first and say that I intend to support the motion with respect to variance number two, concurring with staff and Ms. Williams' evaluation of the findings, that those standards are at least partially met, if not substantially met. So I won't be repeating those. This is an extremely difficult case for me, and I don't know how I will be voting, because, again, with regard to variances one A and one B, I feel we've, well, first off, I find that I want to commend the petitioner. I think they've gone, they've built a very attractive fence. They've taken a number of steps, thinking that you were doing the right thing and following the code, and now you find that you're in a situation where it doesn't meet all the requirements and a variance is necessary, and that's why you're here tonight. I don't think you're here. I concur with everything you've said. I think your intentions were to do the right thing all along, and I commend you for that. We, as a board, have to find that all seven standards are met. And like I mentioned, there have been some Title 21 requirements in place by Girdwood residents, the people of Girdwood, that have made things even more difficult, in my mind, to grant this variance than if it were an anchorage. And so I'm actually struggling, and right now, I don't believe that standards one, three, or seven are met, specifically with regard to standard one. I concur with staff. There are no physical conditions of the lot related to variances one A and one B. The landscaping was pre-existing. It's beautiful. I'd love to have it in my yard. However, it was more from a convenience standpoint for locating the fence. Standard number three, again, a lot of the landscaping that was being avoided was a decision by the applicant, not this petitioner or owner, but the prior builder of the lot, to locate the landscaping where it was located. So I'm struggling with that standard. And again, standard seven being that it's the minimum variance. I don't find those standards are met at this time. I wish if this was a vote for a, the person I'd like to have as my neighbor, that would be a very easy vote, but unfortunately, it's for the seven standards. My decision isn't final, so I'm open to some other, further dialogue, but I do also feel like it's our responsibility to find that the standards are met.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. I'll make a few comments regarding standards one and two as applied to variances one A and B. I wonder if it's within reason to consider, as Ms. Williams discussed briefly, the fact that there is a secondary front yard setback on this lot, and how that may be uncommon along Alieska Highway, and the fact that it's a pass-through having effect on application of the standard, and a limitation regarding standard one and standard two, in terms of, albeit not physical, still a condition that needs to be considered in the case. Additionally, the idea of vegetation within this area. Some of the photos show adjacent properties having what appears to be natural vegetation, creating somewhat of a buffer between the property, the yard area, and the street. I wonder if that natural vegetation and buffering provides some protection and reasonable use of those other properties, yard areas, wherein the subject property, it appears that a previous owner cleared that vegetation, and there is no separation between the yard area and what's just outside the lot line. So under those two lines of thinking, I may be able to find that standard one and standard two are at least partially met. Have no comment yet on standard number seven, but look forward to additional discussion. two is met and would approve variance two. So if board member comments, excuse me, board members feel similarly, and we need to split the variances, then we can perhaps pursue that option.
I'm going, I am in support of this, of passing this variance request. I believe in standards one and two, the fact that, well, one, the previous owner stripped the lot of its vegetation, so it doesn't have any natural separation from the highway, and the fact that having an additional 25-foot setback on what you had normally considered your backyard, I think that's a little extreme. And to enforce the standards and have the Petersons move their fence within the yard setback to comply with the 30%, would deprive them of a considerable amount of their yard, and probably that's not something that would be suffered by any of their neighbors. I could see that that's a humongous chunk out of their yard if they had to move the fence within the setback, any fence. And to have, you know, that is a very beautiful fence. I've driven by that place a million times. And it's not over height. It's, if a moose really wanted to get in there, it probably would, but it would slow them down, at least, I mean, make them think about it. And it does afford a measure of security and safety for the occupants. And, you know, especially, you know, even if it weren't dogs, it would be children. So I do plan, I do plan to support the variance.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Patrick?
I concur with Ms. Denny, and I do plan to support this variance. I think there's a number of issues here that have happened. And the, I think the petitioner has went to great length to make sure that everything was in the right place with your locates and your survey and such. And I also think that the second yard front back is rather confusing to the average person, and I do believe that has something to do with this and can be, I see that as a reason that these, this is substantially met.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any other board member comments? Mr. Cars, I understand, as you've mentioned a couple of times, the restrictiveness of this Girdwood code. And we do have to evaluate this case on its merits in consideration of that restrictive code. We have heard from the public, perhaps one of the most affected members of the public regarding that issue, and have some confidence therein, for what it's worth. Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Along those lines, certainly there would have been, at the time, these more restrictive aspects of the code were put into place. There would have been a public process, and the folks of Girdwood would have had an opportunity to comment on that. But I do find that the letter from the Girdwood Valley Service Area Board of Supervisors writing the letter of non-objection, speaking, I think, for their community, should carry some weight with regard to the impact of the applicant's fence to the community. And so I plan to consider that when I deliberate on that. And with regard to the two front yards, the frontage along Alieska Highway, yeah, it does meet the definition of a lot that would have a second front yard. Realistically, the, I don't know if this is a consideration, but there's certainly no real possibility that there's ever going to be any access off of Alieska Highway to this lot from the Department of Transportation. I don't see that ever happening. And the fact that the right-of-way here is 100 feet wide, I think, provides a feeling of an open corridor, that a narrower right-of-way that you would typically see in a subdivision would not have. And so I think from an environmental or aesthetic viewpoint, I don't think that it's the same consideration that I would view this as if it was in a standard subdivision street that was intersected at the back. So if that makes any sense, I think I'm getting closer to being able to support this motion, and I'd be interested to hear other ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. You raised an interesting point there at the end. I'm not evaluating this case based on the attractiveness of the fence, but its impact on the view shed, I think, is important. And as you stated, Mr. Vig, I find that the design of the fence lessens what impact there may be almost completely on that view shed. Mr. Barrett, did you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, in regard to Mr. Vig's possible concern about any driveway access to Alieska Highway, Alieska Highway access is specifically forbidden by Platte, so that will not happen. There will never be a driveway out of there.
Any other board members wish to comment? Have we reached, yes, Ms. Wadd?
Good evening. My first evening, and this is a difficult one, so bear with me. I want to just briefly touch on and commend you for all of your homework that you did. I do empathize, because it is difficult as members of the community, when you aren't involved in design or construction, to understand the codes and know them. So I do empathize. That doesn't, however, take away the realities of setting a precedent in a community. And the thing that most challenges my thinking is that the fence is not only within the setback, but it's also within a T and E telephone and electric easement. And I'm not sure if that didn't come up in your homework, but also there is a 10-foot utility and drainage easement on the other side. So those are the two most challenging aspects that I'd like the board to consider.
Mr. Cars?
Yeah, just for clarification, following up on a comment from Ms. Wadd, and I apologize if, sorry. Mr. Barrett, often we'll have a requirement, and maybe it's already been done, a letter of non-objection from the affected utilities for encroachment into their easements.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cars, that's correct. We usually do. I'm looking through the comments section to see if we did receive comments to that effect, and I do not see them so certainly. An additional condition about getting letters of no objection from the utility companies would be appropriate.
Mr. Cars, would you like to add that as a condition?
Ms. Williams, I would be opposed to a condition number three to require a letter of non-object, if this variance is to pass, obtaining letters of non-objection from the affected utilities.
I agree.
Okay. Ms. Wadd, does that address your concerns? Mr. Barrett, in this case, should we get confirmation from the petitioner that that condition is understood, or?
That's appropriate, please.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, do you understand the third condition that was just added to the case, and are you agreeable to it, to get letters of non-objection from those affected utilities?
Yes, that's CEA out front. And when I called for locates, I ensured that my fence was well outside the locates. I don't know if you've ever done that before, but when you put in a fence, if you're within two feet of the center line, you have to dig by hand. I was outside that two foot, and we were able to use equipment to put in the fence. But I am willing to go to CEA and get that for the board. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other discussion by board members, or are we at a point where we can, we can vote? Okay. Let's vote. Can we back up? Are you going to split those? Okay. As Chair, if it's under my purview, I'll withdraw that request of vote. Can we back up? Are you going to split those? As Chair, if it's under my purview, I'll withdraw that request to vote. It seems there's a need for additional discussion or perhaps splitting of the variance requests.
Ms. Williams, I wouldn't be opposed to splitting the two, voting on variance one and variance two separately.
I agree with Mr. Cars.
Okay. All right.
Is it necessary, then, if we are splitting the variance request in two, to have the third condition attached to the second variance request regarding the stream protection setback?
I don't believe so, but clarification or confirmation from Mr. Barrett, I guess, is that wooden fence within any utility easements?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Denny is correct, though wood fence does not appear to be within any easement, so it does not belong with that motion.
And Ms. Williams, since the motion is yours, I guess you could elect which one we'd like to vote on first.
I think it makes sense to vote on the first variance for the reduced, or from AMC 21.09.070.
Okay. Jeller, are we set up? Mr. Cars, are you still the second on this split motion?
Yes.
That motion passes with five yea votes, two no votes, and two, two folks absent tonight. And Ms. Williams, the second motion?
I move we grant a variance from AMC 21.45.210 to allow a fence within the 25-foot stream protection setback.
And that's according to conditions one, two, and three on?
There is no condition three for this one.
That's correct. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Conditions one and two on page eight of the planning staff analysis.
Thank you. We just discussed that, didn't we?
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. I believe we've had discussion as necessary, so let's go ahead and vote. That motion passes with seven yea votes. One last time for the night, I'll read for the record, "Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." Thank you both for being here this evening. Thanks to the members of the public who testified. That closes tonight's public hearing. A few more agenda items which appear vacant, no reports. Mr. Barrett, any reports?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, we've been talking about how different Chapter Nine, the Girdwood portion of the code is. Title 21 is going to be released by the mayor probably next week. We should know tomorrow. We hope to have it in front of the Planning Commission December, January at the latest, and hope for adoption sometime in the summer of 2012. And following close on its heels is going to be a new zoning code for Eagle River. And both of the new codes, the new Title 21 and the new Chapter 10, which is Eagle River, are going to look more like the Girdwood code does now than the existing Title 21 code does. So I guess if you thought they'd do it different in Girdwood, we're going to do it different here, too, so.
Thanks for the heads up, Mr. Barrett.
It was all, thank you.
All right. Any board member comments? We have a meeting scheduled for next month, Mr. Barrett. What's the docket look like?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, three cases that night. We passed the cutoff date. Show of hands if you know you will not be here, certain for certain. And I know Gloria Stewart will poll you anyway. I'd just like to get a little count ahead of time. Ms. Vlad?
What is the date again, Mr. Barrett?
Oh, sorry. My calendar.
The 10th, which I think you mentioned last month is preceding a holiday weekend.
That's correct. The 11th, Friday, is a holiday. Veterans Day.
Ms. Williams, did you have a comment there?
I know my term expires tomorrow, so is there protocol for attending public hearings if I have not been reappointed?
It's better than just protocol, Ms. Williams, it's code. You're cleared to serve through 120 days, which would put you into mid-February.
Okay.
And I'm glad you, congratulations. And I'm glad you mentioned that because we've not heard from the mayor's office about the reappointments. So tomorrow morning I will get on the phone with them.
All right. As for attendance next month, don't know. Daughter number three is due Thanksgiving timeframe, so might be a last-minute game decision.
Okay, so Ms. Vlad and Mr. Ron are pretty much a no. You're a...
I wouldn't say I'm a no. If the baby comes on time on Thanksgiving, I'll be here on the 10th, but right with the turkey. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Barrett, for all three cases tonight. Thank you, board members. I'm sure it's dark outside and plenty cold, so drive safe.
Possibility of freezing rain. They were staying early, so watch it.